Commissioner Fai will be here in about twenty minutes. So.
I have no idea where Roy is.
And we don't know where Roy is.
Is Roy gonna make it or is he gonna?
I don't know.
Okay.
There's Commissioner Rogers. Join the, join the slightly late to the morning party club, Commissioner Rogers. So, uh, today we have our work session and this afternoon is chock full of great topics. We also have the, um, regular business meeting. We, we have no changes to the business meeting agenda. We do have a fourth topic on our work session agenda for later this afternoon. And we will make sure Commissioner Rogers to, uh, get you out the door and headed to Tiger for your event.
Oh, great.
No later than four o'clock.
Okay.
To out this building.
Thank you.
Okay, so my brain is catching up with me. I hardly finished my coffee this morning, so I brought with, which means I'm even further behind what you usually experience at nine AM in the morning. So who would like to go first today for board communications?
Oh, shoot, I will.
Thank you, because somebody needs to save me.
I'm saving Pam, because she wasn't good either. The, uh, uh, last week was, was kind of a salmonberry week. Um, on Wednesday was the Salmonberry Trail Intergovernmental Agency, uh, quarterly board meeting. We met in Wheeler, um, went for a little hike, um, around to see some more of the, uh, areas that the trail is gonna come through. It's, it's always very cool when you get out there. It was wet, uh, but not as wet as it could have been. So anyway, we had a, um, so we had that little tour. We had a board meeting and, uh, then a little bit of a social meeting afterwards. So that was, um, that was good. And then came back to attend the Clean Water Services Dinner. That was a very nice dinner, very well done. And so, um, yeah, I appreciate the invitations, certainly the, um, the opportunity. I, I sat across the table from, uh, two women who were both from DC. And so it was good to hear their perspective on a number of things that were going on, so that was good. Then on Friday, made the trek back to kind of midway between here and Telomac out in the middle of nowhere, uh, for a Salmonberry Trail Foundation Retreat where we were talking about, uh, the mission statement and our vision statement of where we're going. We've, Salmonberry Trail Foundation has only been in, and, um, in place for, I don't know, a year or two years maybe. Time passes pretty quickly, but, um, so the relationship between the foundation and the Intergovernmental Agency is what we've been working on for a long time. Who's gonna take the responsibility for raising the money? Well, that's gonna be the foundation. Who's gonna be responsible for trail, um, guidelines and, uh, criteria for what the trail's gonna look like? Who's gonna maintain it, all those things? So we're trying to be much more visionary about, uh, where we're going. Because, uh, we have, uh, a seven mile segment, uh, starting out here at Buckston that's gonna go towards Stubb Stewart. We're gonna be pulling rail, um, which is the first step in the next few weeks that starts. It's about a ten-week project. And so that's kind of the first big step of the Salmonberry Trail, uh, no matter where it is on the eighty-two mile length.
Volunteers do that, or do you hire a crew?
No, we hired a company. You have to hire a company, because it's.
It's heavy stuff.
It's a heavy duty process. Um, we've been working with LUT and I really appreciate Erin certainly and Stevens', uh, participation in on that. Um, but no, we're pretty excited about this. It's a company and we, we interviewed three companies. Uh, two of them were gonna cost us money. The third one liked our project and so they're going to pay us some residual. So, uh, we're gonna make a little money on this depending on, you know, what, what steel prices. Sure. Sure, they're gonna share the profits, because you know.
To a non, to a nonprofit.
Yeah, that's why.
We're all giving Commissioner Teresa a hard time for giving Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, 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 take it easy here. Anyway, it was good, it was good. Um, yesterday, uh, was the Get Wet for a Vet Golf Event. That's an annual event that raised about three hundred thousand dollars out of pumpkin. Um, they moved it interestingly from Veterans Day, uh, a few years ago so that we didn't get wet.
Oh, and then it rained.
Then yesterday.
It was cold.
We, it rained the entire eighteen hours. It was wet and cold by the time we got done.
Oh, you were a wet vet.
I was a wet vet yesterday, yes, I was. But it was, you know, it was well attended. We'll, we'll get the financial results here and I'm, it's all. This week, we have the District Eight AOC meeting, so looking forward to that, Pam, and where, where we go from there. Um, and then one other thing, and then of course we got Saturday night. We got the Towelton River Keepers, uh, Gala that, uh, is gonna be Saturday night. And I don't know who's doing, okay?
You and I'll be good company.
Yeah, and Judy will be with us.
Great.
So, yeah, it'll be, that'll be.
It'll be nice to have some social time with the two of you.
And it's out at a place that's very cool. We had, and have been there several years ago. Um, and so, yeah, I, it's, it's a very cool venue. And then lastly is, uh, the Trustland County Small Group Conversations with the Governor's Office. Um, I now have a standing meeting every Friday. Let me look, I think it's every Friday at nine thirty, um, for the next six weeks. And so there's some adjustments I will need to make, uh, in our, in our, in my calendar, being able to attend a couple of events with the county here. So we'll figure out the priorities of that.
Yeah, the one I'm most concerned about is the CWS Learning Day on Friday, the thirteenth.
I'm only gonna be there till noon on that day anyway. So, no?
I know, they know.
I know, um, so I'm running away for, um, running away for, uh, a weekend.
Excellent.
Um, yeah, and this was, uh, this was kind of a rotary event that Judy, we put on my calendar a long, long time ago. So anyway, leaving at noon and I'll catch up with Clean Water Services. Uh, but yeah, the, the nine thirty events are, um, Fridays are pretty good days, but we'll see where they go. Fortunately, they are all Zoom, so I don't have to trek to Salem to attend them. So anyway, that's all I got. My five minutes up, Kevin? There you go. I took my thesis.
Luckily, he doesn't have a buzzer. Commissioner Teresa?
Bill.
Or Rogers? Yep, go ahead.
I'm, I'm ready. Um, thank you for going first, though. So, um, we, it's been a busy week. Uh, started with the TriMet Board, uh, Meeting Reception in Beaverton. And that was, uh, attended by both, by the Chair and by Commissioner Fai and myself, the reception was. And then the Chair and I, uh, provided testimony, mostly me, but, and thank you to those who helped prep that. But, uh, the Chair sat at the table with me and was, and was supportive as well. It was a really good opportunity to see the TriMet Board in action again in the community. They, they have a history of meeting out in the community, which really, I, I think allows them the opportunity to, to, to see and feel what's happening throughout the entire system.
And we greeted the newest TriMet Board Member representing Washington County, uh, Robert Kellogg, former Towelton City Councilor.
Thank you, yes, thank you. Um, and so it was, uh, it was, it was a very nice event and it gave me the opportunity to, to provide information that we all know about as a board, representing the board, which was that, uh, really focused on the coordination to expand the, uh, Regional Coordination Program. And that's the five point eight million dollars that's gonna be coming to our accounting. I attended the Metro Garbage and Recycle Recycling Symposium, uh, at the Convention Center. And that was really interesting, very interesting. What, there, there was a panel of speakers and one of the speakers actually worked with Tanya in Boulder. So it was, I took a picture of her and, yeah, I was sending it to Tanya. So it was, it's, there was, it was a mutual admiration society between the two of them, for sure. Tom Eggleston was there, the Chair was there for the first part of it. And I, we were the, really the few elected leaders that were in the room outside of Metro Council. So I'm, I'm really glad we went and it gave me the opportunity to, to take the message back that we support the distributed, uh, dis- distributed, uh, scenario first and the full service scenario second. If you remember back to what our presentation was.
Hats off to, um, Tom Eggleston for taking us through that work session, uh, information in advance.
And I'll tell you, it was really interesting to be in the room and, uh, be with Tom. And, and I won't remember the name, uh, there were, the Grack Chair was there as well and it was great to meet him. But, uh, I just wanna take what you said about Tom and, and, uh, what he provided for us a step further and say, it was, it was really interesting to see the high regard in which our staffs primarily, Tom is held in that community. So, you know, it was really, it was very cool. And I, you know, I never thought I'd love garbage so much.
Garbage and recycling, I didn't know I was.
So, um, and the other thing that we talked about a lot was the recycling of textiles. And I'll tell you, it makes me guilty about having a new sweater, although it is sweater weather. So anyway, uh, the next meeting I attended was the MPAC meeting and that agenda, it was mostly informative. There wasn't any, you know, any incisions or recommendations that were put forward. But it was interesting to listen to, uh, the, the comments in, in a generalized sense about the need for the state to stand up to responsibility. So I'm just gonna say that in a general sense, uh, Stephen and I were talking about it just the other day. So, um, and I'll keep you posted on what our, our next, uh, agendas are gonna be like. I met with, uh, Mayor Lube. I had, I really hadn't had an opportunity to get to know Mayor Lube, so I had the opportunity to have coffee with her. And we talked about a lot of different. Tiger, sorry, sorry. And we had an opportunity to talk about Ordinance eight eight two, uh, but it was in general just a, a really nice opportunity to talk with her. I attended the Virginia Garcia Prospera Event on, uh, uh, Friday night last week. And we, we had a great time. We have a great picture of the Washington County contingent that was there, mostly HHS, but also Courtney was there. Jessica Pelz was there. So it was, it was really fun. There were only, uh, Steve Callaway, myself and Garrick Rosenthal, uh, Council Rosenthal from, um, uh, Metro were the only elected officials there. And the, the room was packed. It was, it was a, a really well-attended event. Last night was the Acre Meeting and thanks to Brad and Amanda for really getting us through the bylaws situation. And I, I, I felt it was a good meeting. Thank you, Erin, for being there as well. We got, we got through the bylaws. There was a lot of discussion and I think it was a, a good opportunity for all of us to see our perspectives as we come to that meeting. And that's hard work. I mentioned it at the end, but, uh, the last time we sat up at a, a new organi- a, a new group that had bylaws has to be a long time ago. And it's, it's, it's a lot of work. So, but thank you for that. Uh, this week is the District Eight AOC Meeting and thank you for sending out the link from AOC. I wanna remind everybody here that it is the AOC Meeting. And the purpose of these meetings is, you'll see in the agenda, is a lot around the AOC Organization and the budget that they, that they pull, pull forward. We have good attendance. Thank you for working, Commissioner Willie, with Dave Pirlo at, uh, uh, WCBA to provide a thousand dollar, um.
Sponsorship.
Sponsorship for us. I think it's the first time that an AOC Organization has had a meeting, has had a sponsor. And I talked with Dave last week while he was in Chicago and just kind of got, you know, got something set up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work there, too. Uh, this week, I, again, the District Eight Meeting and check-in meeting with, um, Catherine Ciarlo and Malu Wilkinson from Metro and Jessica Pelz. And we're gonna be just going over LUT issues. And also I'm the incoming Chair to MPAC, so just making sure that, you know, we're all on the same page there. So that, I haven't getting my COVID shot on Wednesday. So that's my update.
Great. Good morning, Commissioner Rogers. Anything you'd like to share?
Again, um, hello to everyone. My next two weeks are, uh, what I affectionately call Hell Week periods. I, October fifteenth, Jerry, you'll remember that well.
Oh, yeah, I better file my tax return.
Oh, right.
Countless times, so I'm a little absent. I apologize, but that's called making a bit of a living. Couple of things. One, I had a nice breakfast with a new R one act member, Keith Wilson. You probably don't know him. He's been, uh, pretty famous on TV with his electric fleet of, of, of trucks, yeah.
Eighteen-wheelers.
Yeah, and he was explaining the economics of that. So we had a nice time. It was interesting. Last night, uh, was the, um, Region One Commission Meeting. I was in conflict with the Audit Committee Meeting that I was supposed to attend. But I gave him a whole list of issues that I'd like them to attend to. Many of them I think might be of interest to the board. So we'll see whether I, I get anything back. I did that both with Clean Water as well as, as, uh, the county. But last night's meeting, um, it was a, you never know what you're gonna run to. It was an interesting one in that Travis Bauer was speaking in regards to, um, what he normally does. He calls that, I guess, Econ one oh one or Transportation one oh one.
Yeah, Transportation Funding one oh one.
One oh one. Uh, unfortunately, um, the audience, uh, wasn't really enjoying his message as much. They liked him and what he was saying, they didn't like where it was leading. Um, there's a lot of questions around, uh, just so that you know, because I know you all serve on Transportation Committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, one, uh, we appreciate the state has their issues and so does local government. So they kept pushing back, saying, you're not saying anything we don't. And so there was a lot of fear about the fifty, thirty, twenty and, "Don't forget us." And what are you, what are you dealing with? The mayors were particularly, and you mentioned Heidi Lube, she was there, her, her issue was safety. And what, what are you telling us you're going to do? Um, the Clackamas folks and the South Washington County folks, obviously, were interested in, uh, uh, the tolling issue. That's where they're at. Uh, they continue to push the equity position that you can drive from Hillsborough to Portland without a toll, but you can't drive from Clackamas County to Portland or from South County to Portland without a toll. And they don't think that's equitable and saying, "Look at the gas tax," with a lot of comments. Uh, the most interesting comment, one person said, "Well, if you can't fix the system, why don't you, why don't you stop maintaining it or revert it? Give it away." And I, I didn't, no one else subscribed to that particular theory, but it was a, an interesting comment. Um, what I told Travis in my brief comments, because when you're chairing, you're trying not to hog messages, that I, I think they need to have a better messaging as to, they're not the only one in the financial hurt bucket, if you wanna call it that. That, uh, that they're not alone, uh, and they need to understand that. So, um, I, I think he picked that up. They're looking at other options. I mean, we heard Steve Callaway from Hillsborough, we heard from Longmont County folks, Clackamas County, River County folks. Um, it's always a, a very interesting, uh, what else? The White Salmon Bridge updates there, you know, might be interesting. And to do a few remarks at Tiger's Library tonight, which you heard about and the Chair, uh, alluded to. Um, I think I'll stop with that, other than I, I'm too really strained on that next week on this, every day. I've got, uh, when you're working seven days a week, it's kind of hard to take full data. But, uh, it's only temporary. We just, I think everybody decided that the week, first two weeks of October were something that we needed to put meetings into. So I go, wow. So my little bit of grouse, but just telling you why, so.
Sorry, I, in working with CWS and scheduling the learning days, I had forgotten about October fifteenth. No, no?
That's because you're a good person and you file early. Not like all the rest of them.
She's already spent her refund, whereas mine, not so much.
So you haven't even filed?
Haven't filed yet.
I haven't either.
Oh, it's Truth in Texas Day, Tuesdays.
Well, thank you.
It's just kind of a case of the cobbler has no shoes.
Well, I'll, I'll go. It is a very busy time. I mean, just this week, we have our day today, Tuesday. We have the AOC District Eight Meeting tomorrow. And then, uh, Round Table on Thursday. And, uh, Commissioner Rogers was just highlighting, good morning, Commissioner Fai, highlighting our CWS Learning Days next Wednesday and Friday of next week. Uh, just a, a few more items, uh, information items I'd like to share. Uh, I had a meeting with Rep Bowman last week, uh, was really productive to, uh, talk a bit more about how we might, um, help our state legislators better understand the role of counties in partnership, uh, the shared services model with the state. And, uh, uh, Erin Doyle mentioned, uh, to me that that is a question that we should pose to our state legislative guests at the AOC District Eight Meeting tomorrow. Uh, you know, what, what would serve them the best? Uh, because they're, they're going to be hearing a lot about that from all commissioners from across the state, not only leading up to the short session, but all the way through the long session in twenty twenty-five. I had a really truly excellent, uh, staff briefing with Stephen Roberts and Erin Wardell on Ordinance eight eighty-two and the evolution of that. And, uh, after that, I went back and watched the March Meeting on the prior form of eight eighty-two, because I was beginning to doubt, was I even at that meeting? And lo and behold, yes, I had, uh, zoomed in from New Hampshire on that. But clearly, I did not internalize the presentation that was provided then. So our staff is, uh, working and I don't know how it's gone at the Planning Commission, but their recommendation, uh, is evolving from using an alignment to going to the step prior to that on refinement areas. Uh, and so I've been pushing that information out in multiple constituent emails as well as meetings that I've had. Uh, but Stephen and Erin are available, of course, uh, for briefings with all of you, but also with community groups along the way. So, um, last week, last Thursday, I traveled to Salem to participate in, uh, testimony before the House Economic Development and Small Business Committee. I sent you my, uh, talking points on that as well. So, um, all part of the educating of the legislatures. I really appreciated being on a panel with the Mayor of Hermiston, who's the incoming President of LOC. He's very articulate, as well as the Finance Manager from Wood Village. I also had, uh, a briefing with Stephen Roberts and Rachel Fuller on the MISTIP and the CIP, continuing to help me internalize how, uh, that is all being integrated and what the complex landscape of transportation finance continues to be. Having, um, been not on the Commission, but at Metro with House Bill twenty seventeen and twenty seventeen and leading up to that and all that transpired in late twenty fifteen through twenty sixteen. I tell you, hearing that there could be a transportation package in twenty twenty-five, that's a big lift. Um, but boy, do we need to modernize our systems here in our state. Just leave it at that. So, um, I think that's it from me. Uh, I'm doing my best to make sure I've got some decent information for you for the Round Table tomorrow. And in addition to, thank you, Thursday, in addition to this week and next week being busy, I'm really looking forward to a vacation away. Uh, we're going to Italy for a week and a half.
Oh.
So, yes, I'm reverting back to my old ways. The way to disconnect from work is to disconnect from the entire country.
Don't take international service.
Like that, it's been ninety-five in Italy, uh, over the last.
I've never been there in the fall. I've always been in the summer, so. You're in Italy? A little town called Cortona. It's not even a bike trip this time. We will rent bikes. Yeah, yeah. So it'll be nice. So anyway, yes. Um, Commissioner Fai, what have you got for us?
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, I didn't even watch the time. I apologize.
You were, you were one minute.
I don't think you were over.
Really?
Yeah, I saw some time left.
Emma and I took you one minute, thank you.
I saw some time.
Must have paused it. I'm sorry. Um, I have a new staff assistant, thanks to the work of the County Administrative Office, Jory Messner. Welcome, Jory. We're glad to have you on Team Washington County. So she'll whip me into shape, don't worry. All those meetings I've been late to the last couple of weeks despite Brenda's best efforts. And I appreciate all that Brenda has done to, to keep me moving along.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'll just, uh, speak you back on a topic you mentioned, the transportation funding challenges. So yesterday, I attended the AOC's Transportation Committee Meeting. Commissioner Willie, you attended that. Um, but this was a, uh, combined meeting with counties and the legal services, or League of Cities, um, LOC. And it was a really good conversation. Uh, the theme, obviously, as the Chair mentioned, was the funding challenges that's happening across anywhere and everywhere in Oregon. And we've heard from four, uh, different jurisdictions. So we've heard, um, Clackamas County and we've heard from Columbia County. And we've heard both from the city of Eugene and the city of Palomar.
Palomar.
Palomar. I knew I said it wrong.
Did fine.
I knew. Um, woman, and that was the small, smallest city in Oregon.
Is that right?
Yeah, I did tell that. And also Columbia County.
Palomar's not the smallest city.
They said it was the smallest city.
Maybe at AOC.
Or maybe at L O C.
Johnson City, I think is.
Yeah. Johnson City's.
They have six thousand.
Yeah, Johnson City, there's way smaller than that.
Oh, it's a way smaller.
Population-wise.
I stand corrected, okay. Well, I'll double check. I'll double check with my notes.
Maybe the smallest in that county.
In that, maybe, perhaps. So let's, let's double check. Did take notes. So, actually, they said, here's my notes. City of Palomar. Palomar is the smallest city in Oregon, according to the city manager.
Maybe geographically.
Geographic.
Yeah, I don't know. Johnson City's pretty tiny.
And then Columbia County, I learned that was the smallest county by land as well.
We're the fifth smallest by land.
Yeah.
That's so weird. We're huge.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Telomac still has more cows than people, so, you know.
Forget that. That's like brain tattooed in my brain from the, um, that trip we went.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so going back to my notes and the message here about that meeting. So the theme or the message that emerged from that discussion was, yes, House Bill two thousand seventeen was significant and it did bring new revenue, but still there were unmet needs of every county and every city in Oregon. And one of the deficits, the major deficits in terms of the transportation systems, that hasn't been really given a lot of attention or sort of because of the cost increase and inflations was maintenance and operations funding and how that was universal across the county. Um, and, and moving forward, that committee was sort of gathered together and just elevate what that package would look like in terms of maintenance and operations and how we dedicate some funding. And then the, the, yesterday feels like, or this week, feels like it was a AOC week or days. Uh, the other meeting I attended was very fascinating, was the AOC Health and Human Services Gathering. And this is one of four meetings. Were you listening?
No, I just went the retreat when they said they wanted to have more talk time.
Oh.
I thought, great, have a good time. I thought, great, have a good time. I have too much work to do.
Send me the cliff notes.
You see, I wasn't at that retreat, but I think I channeled in on that message somehow, especially and not necessarily that message, but the reality for our board and how we have a big portfolio around some of the conversations we're having and the discussion of what that entails. So I did let them know, we can't participate, just talks, we need more concrete to come out of this. Cause there was a lot of like political ideology conversations yesterday. There was a lot of like divisive conversation happening. And it wasn't just one person or two people. It seemed like a universal at that meeting yesterday. So I did voice that concern. Yes. I did, I did voice that concern and I didn't, you know, mean to derail the conversation, but a lot of people did say, yeah, there is a lot of that happening and that is in the role for county electeds. We're supposed to leave that to the people who run on a party base, those kind of rhetoric. So more to continue on that. One message or conversation or a topic that emerged from that meeting that I just want to bring it here. Nothing to follow up or any of that, but measure one-ten. And repealing, not repealing, criminalizing, decriminalizing, that conversation came up and that seems to be, might be an emerging topic from that committee and just something you might hear, but I will only bring it if it's action we need to take or something we need to voice.
Well, that'll come out of the ledge committee. Related to that one item that I neglected to share, I've been asked by a few different people if I would be going on one of these Portugal trips to go see how that country is handling drug use and substance use disorder treatment. And no, I'm not going on one of those trips. But I would like to share with all of you that I had the lucky fortune of hearing on the way home from the ACRE meeting last night, the rebroadcast of a Think Out Loud piece. So it's available to download or podcast or whatever on OPB.org radio. And it was a half hour segment on, with a a well-known psychologist of some kind in this whole domain. And the highlights were that Portugal has a system. Few base points. They have universal healthcare. But they have the system that is very, as presented, is very caring and humanistic to try and help people get, get people off of the street, particularly if they're drug users or homeless and into services. Very, they have a decriminalized model like Measure one-ten. But their system is fundamentally different than what we have in this country. Universal healthcare, okay, and a greater system of services than we have. We here in Oregon are growing our systems and I know I've had the opportunity of getting more familiar with that through the Behavioral Health Network grants that the Measure one-ten funding has enabled. It's a very good start, but we're not along as far down the path. The other key point that I felt this show was missing is that what I hear from people in the greater community, not just here in Washington County, but throughout our metropolitan area is they're just tired of seeing people who they describe as indigent, you know, homeless, mental health difficulties, drug users out on the street. Several people have expressed to me, they're just tired of seeing it. And so what I'm, I'm not one of the folks who's a proponent for repealing one-ten. Rather, I've tried to spend my time and energy in terms of how do we continue to have the systems in place so that we have the services and we get people connected to those services, which is one reason why I've been wondering when the city of Portland passed their ordinance on not allowing drug use out in the public domain. I'm still trying to learn more about what it is that they need, short of decriminalizing one-ten, to see if that is something that we would want to advocate for as well, so that we don't, as a general community, have to see this out on the streets day in and day out. So I just wanted to share that Think Out Loud piece because I don't think we need to go to Portugal to get an overview, a decent overview of what that system is. So.
And I think I'm glad to learn without suffering jet lag. And I think in addition to that, Portugal implemented their, our, you know, our version of Measure one-ten in two thousand and one. So they have like a couple of decades under their belt where in Oregon, we just started this Measure one-ten and we're just getting the system going. So it seems like Portugal and Oregon, it's sort of like.
Apple's largest.
Yeah, it's because it's twenty years under their belt and versus, but you're right, they have that system existing.
Yeah.
You know, like, so it's not a.
Our healthcare system and a universal healthcare system are very different.
Very different.
Now, they did have Maxwell on the show previously, and I have not gone and sought that out yet. So just more for us to all learn.
I just went on OPB and I copied it and sent it to the board and to Erin and to Brad. So just as an FYI.
Yeah. Well, we'll all learn together. Okay, well, onward to leadership communication. Thank you, Ms. Calvert, for being our pro tem while Ms. Angie is at the ICMA Board and Conference.
Well, thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. It's great to be with you while she's away. I have a couple of things this morning, following the recommendation of Commissioner Treese. Matt Craigie, who's our Economic Development Manager, has been invited to participate in the Metro Urban Growth Report Stakeholder Roundtable. And this is a process that occurs every six years and helps ensure that the region has enough buildable land to accommodate anticipated growth for the next twenty years. So this, this new time limited advisory group will help inform the chief operating officer's recommendation to the Metro Council on the urban growth boundary decision at the end of two thousand and twenty-four. And taking a one-Washington County approach, of course, Matt will coordinate with the board, with government relations and also land use and transportation staff as he represents the county's position in the forum. And then, as you mentioned, because the board does love garbage and recycling so much, I just wanted to recall that your board approved a food scrap collection program earlier this summer back in June. And we're happy to report that the Health and Human Services Solid Waste and Recycling Division has activated the program as of October first. All urban areas and cities in Washington County, except for banks, will now offer food scraps, composting, collection services to single-family homes. And as the Solid Waste and Recycling Manager, Tom Eggleston, pointed out in a recent media release, a two thousand and sixteen Oregon Department of Environmental Quality study found that almost thirty percent of residential garbage is food. And when food starts to break down in the landfills, it releases methane gas, which traps heat in our atmosphere and contributes to climate change. So.
It's also really heavy to transport out to landfill.
Yes.
So water.
Yes.
Yeah, doesn't it represent like seventy percent of the weight or something?
Yeah, it's really crazy.
So that's great. And then lastly, I don't know that she'll like that we're doing this, but we all want to give a thank you to Rachel Fuller. We want to recognize. We know goodbyes are always about the people that are left, really, really. So.
Yeah. You excel in your field, Rachel. Thank you, thank you for sharing your expertise with us these, what, two years? We would keep you longer if we could.
We would. So yes, just recognizing the service that Rachel Fuller has given to the county. As she ends her time this week, she did complete two years as an interim. So I don't know that anybody, you know, when you go into an interim, you just don't always know how it's going to end, but we're really happy for the two years. Rachel's helped lead the organization by overseeing a wide range of the departments and offices, including land use and transportation, cooperative library services, economic development, and Westside Commons. She's been providing staff support, as you all know, into the community-facing strategic planning process. She's been guiding the organization's implementation of the, of ARPA and contributed to the county's ongoing implementation of Design the Future, including the current service level assessment and the capital improvement plan, among, among other things. We're wishing Rachel all the best as she heads back to her life in Hood River, which is just a reminder is an eighty-five mile commute. And so that's just another way that she's really contributed and being here and being present for all of us. So thank you, Rachel.
Not only eighty-five miles, but it's on eighty-four and twenty-six.
Exactly.
So it's about a hundred and seventy miles.
What I remember from Rachel is any hot topic that the board came across, there's been Rachel right there.
Yeah.
So we will miss the, the leader, your leadership and the calmness you provide to your staff and how you take the hard questions. I noticed that and I see it. So I appreciate that. You're, I was, I was reading the Megan's email this last night and the changes and I was like, is Rachel really leaving?
We've tried.
I guess it's happening, Rachel. It's happening.
My denial isn't getting me anywhere.
Not going anywhere.
Thank you, Rachel.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hi, Brad. How was the conference?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. So Adriana Ortega in our office and I went to the MLAW Conference. It was in La Quinta, California, outside of Palm Springs, Palm Desert area.
What does MLS stand for again?
International Municipal Lawyers Association.
Oh, okay.
So it's lawyers from, some lawyers from Canada and then a lot from the United States. And it's mostly city lawyers, but a fair representation from counties. Really good conference and presentations. Adriana and I purposely tag teamed so we could get the most coverage. But my take home is this, we're all dealing with the same issues across the country. It's, it's amazing. It's like, how many people have dealt with this? And it's like seventy-five percent of the hands raised. So, yeah, we're all, we're all working on the same issues across the country.
What would you say were the biggest issues or most prevalent?
Well, I, so we haven't seen this in Washington County so much, but public participation in board meetings is a challenge and I might talk to you in the future about this. It, it turns out that people are using, because we're online, that they're trying to monetize saying crazy things before city council and county commissioner meetings. Really interesting. ARPA funding, big subject. The federal audits are coming, so there's a lot of discussion on being prepared for federal audits. But just a lot of, you know, we talked a lot about.
Homelessness, drug use.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Transportation.
Transportation.
Housing.
Housing, 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 housing.
Public safety?
Yes, yes, I went to a presentation on an interesting public safety issue that's happening across the country as well. And just emerging legal issues, for example, a lot of the jurisdictions are having to address Supreme Court decisions. The most relevant topic right now is how to address foreclosure of properties. There was a case, Tyler versus Hennepin County, I think out of Minnesota, that we're having to rethink how we do the foreclosure process. Probably heard about that statewide law as well.
Yep.
So, yeah, really good conference. Weather was really interesting. It was really hot to start out with and it got really windy and dusty. And then, then it cooled down. So, yeah, interesting. One other thing I want to share with you, we have hired a new attorney in our office who's going to start on October seventeenth and her name is Pam. She ready? I'll send you out a little notice on that. She just accepted yesterday. So we're really looking forward to her coming. She has a lot of experience. She's going to be a litigator for our office. She was mostly recently in the city of Portland Attorney's Office, but also has spent a substantial period of time in Tom Carr's old haunts from his early years of the Eastern District of New York US Attorney's Office, which is a premier US Attorney's Office in the country prosecuting some of the leading cases, criminal cases in the country. So really good experience. We're really happy that she accepted and that she's going to go to our office.
Wonderful. Great. We'll look forward to that. Yes, yes. We'll look forward to that introduction and good job on staffing.
Thank you.
Good morning, Diane.
Good morning and thank you, Chair Harrington, and good morning to the Board of Clean Water Services. Thank you for the time you spent with us with the Vinge and Louse relegation from VCOMs. There is really great interest in nature-based solutions and we were told that there's an interest from the Water Partnership and the State Department to fund a small technical team to go back in February to define the scope of a potential pilot project there. So we'll hear more if the funding is approved. And we're looking forward to the board learning next week. I know you're, you're going to be busy. So the board packet is going to go out tomorrow, both electronically and delivered to your offices with the presentations. If there's any questions about items, we can brief both of you after the board learning to see if there's more things that we should consider. But we really want to thank you for your time. I know it's a lot next week. So. The team is at WEF Tech and they're with the Vinge and Louse folks and they participated in the program there at WEF Tech. And they brought all of the partners that are from Vietnam and lots of other places together with their, with their partners in the US. So it was, it sounds like it was a really good conference. Our teams are participating in the Ops Challenge as we speak. So I've been getting pictures from them and it's, it's been a really great experience for them because we got a huge hiatus in participating in that. So the operations and maintenance and laboratory and the conveyance folks all have to participate on teams. So it's an integrated team.
Great.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. Maybe we can get a short presentation at a business meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
They'll get a highlight in our pipeline.
Yeah, yeah. Terrific. Great. Thank you. Well, just to double check before we move into the auditorium, do commissioners have any questions with regard to what's on our agenda coming up next? Just wanted to double check. Okay, then we'll pause it there and come back. I think Clerk Moss was doing some time estimation and thinking that our board meeting might, if it gets over by eleven fifteen, that we might be able to promote one of our topics. I don't know if there were any topics in mind of that list. Okay, okay. Terrific. Thank you. All right. We'll see you in the auditorium at ten o'clock. Thanks, everyone.
Nafisa.
Yeah.
Palomar is ninety-seven.